Good afternoon. It sure is nice to see live bodies in the room, smiling faces and full of enthusiasm, knowledge, and we're gonna make a lot of progress here this afternoon. I hope the first item that we're going to address is a public hearing in regards to the fees for some things here at the town. Holden Beach Draft System Development Fees Report. I believe we... Do you want to go over any rules, Madam Clerk? The three-minute rule or anything?
Um, the public comments. You were supposed to sign up prior to you. We have one who signed up, and it's three minutes per person who signed up. And then did you also want to... I don't know if you would like Mahala to speak before or after the public comment.
How many people we got signed up?
Just one.
Just one? All right. Mr. Mahala? All the way in the back.
All the way in the back.
Would you like to join us up front and speak into the microphone to my right? Tell us who you are and what you do, and speak into the microphone, please, so everybody can hear.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Mahala Cooper Smith. I'm with Raft Ellis, and I prepared the analysis for the calculation of the system development fees.
Any overall statement you'd like to make about what it does, what it says, and so forth?
Sure. So, the system development fees are one-time fees that new customers pay to buy into the system, under the premise that growth helps to pay for growth. We calculated these fees in accordance with the North Carolina legislation, and the fees that we calculated and that are presented in the report are the maximum allowable fees that a town can adopt. Those are not necessarily the fee you must adopt, you just cannot adopt a fee higher than what we calculated. What we calculated is the maximum you are allowed to. These are fees that only new customers pay. Everybody that is an existing customer has already paid a similar fee at one point in time, so it is for new customers only. The fee is calculated on a per-bedroom, and then it would scale up from there. I know there were comments about stopping at four. That was just the sample in our report that stopped at four. It would calculate further up for the number of bedrooms, depending on how many bedrooms are in a house. And I think that addresses most of the comments that I saw. There was only one other comment that I wanted to address. There was a question about using the combined approach for the water system versus the buy-in approach for the sewer system. So, on the sewer system, you did not have any capital planning, any capital projects planned for growth, which is why we use the buy-in approach. For the water system, you had the water tower, and the simplest reason why we included that as well is because you would not need to spend the money on the water tower if you did not need to serve additional new customers. So, that's why we included that in the calculation. But there is a credit given for the debt service that will be paid through user fees, so the difference between if we were to remove the water tower from the calculation and the fee with the water tower in is only about ninety dollars.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And the first speaker...
Excuse me, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
We're in the process of the fees for water, use of water, are going to increase by supposedly sixty, seventy percent. Would that increase have any effect if that was included in your calculation?
That is completely separate. So, your water and sewer retail rates that you pay right now were not included in this analysis, are not... were not part of it and are not related at all to the system development fees.
Does this impact people applying to build a house? Does that impact there?
That's...
Would you explain that?
So, when you apply to get a new water and sewer connection to a house or a development, usually a developer would do it for multiple houses at a time. That's when you would pay the system development fee.
I don't know whether to ask you this or to ask the building inspector, or both. For example, if one was applying to build a 2,000-square-foot house, the fee as it is today versus the fee that would be paid if this were to be passed as presented, what would the difference be?
It depends on the number of bedrooms. It's a per-bedroom fee.
Two-bedroom house.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Shouldn't be a difference between now and then for two bedrooms, no more?
Well, right, because you have the credit for the two-bedroom house.
That's right. The credit.
If you've paid it. If you've paid it. That's something that the town is going to have to decide how they want to address.
Okay, that's the key word. If it's already been paid, that's fine. So, really, what you're talking about is a newly-platted lot that hasn't been paid?
From our perspective, we calculated the system development fee in its pure form. How the town chooses to implement and track who's already paid that and who's not, that that's up to you all to determine.
Commissioners, anybody else got questions? Okay. All right. We ready for the speaker?
If you had an existing home, and it had a three-bedroom house on it, and you tore that house down, and you built a six-bedroom back, would you pay the three additional bedrooms?
That's not a question that I would be able to answer, I think.
That's really a function of how the town wants to set the fees and to consider what may have been credited before.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Commissioners or staff? Questions? If not, speaker number one and the only one, if you will give us your name and be available, please.
Good afternoon. Elaine Jordan, 124 Sand Dollar Street, Holden Beach. I had sent to everyone's mayor, the mayor, council members, and to Manager Hewitt, an email yesterday, which apparently you have seen, and thank you for that. A question that I... And I'm not going to repeat all that I've said there, because it's still some questions. The question I'm still a little confused about, even after your additional presentation this afternoon, is the water tower and this method used for the water fee? Because you used one method for the sewer fee, which is the buy-in method. You use the combined method for the water, and my understanding, from what you just said, was that you use the combined because there is anticipated a water tower construction. But my understanding is there is no water tower that has been approved by this council. So, to me, the water tower should not be considered, and if you didn't consider the water tower construction, would not the buy-in method be the appropriate way to engineer for the... to determine the water fee? If she can answer that... And I understand I'm limited to three minutes, so if...
I'll let you talk.
Let me just say this. My understanding is that tonight, this council is only going to approve the report, one way or the other. And I still have this pending question about the report. My understanding is there is no action tonight to be taken about the sewer development fee, period.
You're incorrect. The board will not approve the report tonight.
Okay, twenty-four hours.
Right. It may approve in twenty-four hours.
Right. Fair enough. Fair enough. The action to be considered is whether to approve the report or not, but my point is that there is no action to be taken on the actual fee schedule. That's my understanding. And I'm hoping that at some point in time, once we figure out whether this report is the question at least I have posed, I hope that there's going to be a lot of conversation in the construction industry and elsewhere about the actual fee schedule, what it's going to be, when it should be, if there should be any increases, and how the credits. I mean, I've heard already two or three questions tonight about how these credits would be used, and what bedrooms, and this and that. So, I think we're going to have a lot of questions about the fee schedule itself. My one and only question, and I appreciate your time, is simply this buy-in method versus the combined method, particularly when we're talking about the water tower that has not yet been approved. Thank you all.
Try to explain that. So, according to the North Carolina System Development Fee Act, HB 436, we are allowed to include five to ten years of planned capital spending, whether it was approved by the board or not. As long as the town has it in their plan, we are allowed to include it. The town is planning to build this tower, and they would not without the, you know, need to serve new customers. So, because of that, we included it in the calculation. The board decides what fees they adopt, but what we calculated is what the law allows us to calculate as the maximum allowable fee, and in this case, including the tower was appropriate in the calculations. I hope that clarifies it.
If you didn't... Just not to...
If I didn't... If we didn't include the tower, it would be the buy-in approach, and the water fee would be ninety dollars less, I believe. I did the math.
Ninety dollars less?
Yes. So, instead of eight sixty, I think it calc... No. Is it eight sixty now?
It's a hundred dollars a bedroom now.
No, the proposed fee that we...
Nine sixty.
Instead of nine sixty, it calculates to eight sixty-seven. I checked the math this morning before I left, but I should have written it out.
Thanks.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, does this conclude our public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right. The hearing is closed, and we shall now move to our regularly scheduled meeting of the town of Holden Beach, and ask that all present, please, bow our heads for a moment All righty. Thank you very much, and we'll officially turn our attention to the unapproved agenda at this point, and we'll call the meeting officially to order, and officially say to all of you, welcome, and ask you to stand with me and pledge allegiance to the flag to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four on our agenda. For those of you that may not be aware, that should be on the back table, a copy of an agenda, if you'd like to follow along. The agenda is now up for consideration, and I believe, Mr. Hewitt, you had a couple of things you wanted to address?
Yes, sir. There's a $6,000 sedimentation characterization grant that's required as one of the conditions of our beach nourishment permit that I'd like to add at 11A. And because Item 13, ISA/IHIS, the budget amendment associated with accepting that $3.8 million in funds, is related to the application for special bond financing, I'd request that the order of Item 13 and Item 12 just be flipped.
Okay. Any other considerations to be given to the agenda? Otherwise, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
As amended? As amended?
As amended.
Okay, a motion made, seconded. All... Any discussion of any kind? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's unanimously approved as amended. We're on number five of the agenda that's now approved, and number five is amendments of April 20, the special meeting and the regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I would just second, ma'am.
Discussion, hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Stand approved. Number six, public comments on agenda items.
We had two that submitted online, so I provided those to you. You have them in front of you. They are on the website, and they're in the back of the room. You take if anybody's interested in what they are, and then nobody signed up to call me to make it.
Okay. So, we'll move to number seven on the agenda, discussion of possible action on the draft system development fees report.
You guys just held the public hearing on the report, so the next step would be to consider adoption of the report. We're asking that you wait at least twenty-four hours, and actually, your town manager Hewitt has a couple of suggestions for you.
Mr. Hewitt?
The staff would actually recommend that it be placed on the June agenda, but due to several moving parts of this, and also its potential impact on adopting, prior to having a recommended rate fee structure in place, I would recommend that you consider it in June with a one-October effective date. We have three specific things that are going to impact that, or they may not directly impact it, but they are peripheral issues. One, we've got the county water contract that you guys need to entertain in the July timeframe. Two, Mike alluded to possible correlation between the county's wholesale water rate increase, and while true, that is not directly related to any impact, I do think that it has a peripheral... It is of peripheral interest to the issue. And three, the ARP guidance, the American Recovery Act guidance, we're still not clear on how those funds might can be used. So, I would put forward to the board that, yes, you can put it on the June agenda, and I see no reason not to approve it, but we need some time to develop a recommended fee structure that goes under... is an underlayment to that report.
If I may, David, I understand that, and that is actually setting the fees, but is there anything that stops us from accepting this so that it becomes a non-draft report, but the formal report?
Well, that's what I was saying at the June meeting. You could consider it, but with an effective date of one October. And I think the item that you're looking for, hypothetically, if you could approve this report tonight, it would have the effect of making our existing sewer fee obsolete because the maximum that can be assessed according to this report is, in effect, less than what the current fee charges.
What's your pleasure, commissioners? Comments?
If I could offer two more options. You don't have to put it on the June agenda for consideration in October. Hypothetically, you could actually push it on out. Or the third option would be, you do not have to approve this report, but that's the board's decision. I think the intent on doing this report was to have it updated, though.
I think the intent was to have it accurate.
Yeah, okay.
So, I would move that we put this on the agenda for June to discuss and possibly approve.
Second.
That was a motion, I guess.
Yes.
And now the second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Madam Clerk, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Chief Dixon, please report.
So, as we're halfway through May, I'll go into a little public service announcement here. No Pets on the Strand actually starts May the 20th, which is in two days. Those times are from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So, no pets on the strand from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Between those hours, 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM, all pets must be on a leash. Talk a little bit about golf carts. We're getting into the summer, so remember, any golf carts on the road are a motor vehicle. So, you have to have a driver's license to operate them and follow all motor vehicle laws, including wearing seat belts, and children must be in child restraints. So, please keep that in mind. Beach equipment must be removed daily, and I think the time on that is 7:00 PM. Beach equipment has to be removed daily. And then the last thing is just a reminder that hurricane season officially starts June 1st. But in doing a little bit of research, I found out that in the last six years, or every year for the last six years, we've had a named storm prior to June 1st. So, that season is upon us. So, now is the time to start making the hurricane plans and keeping that stuff in the back of your mind. I know the stickers are already out there. Make sure you have your decals attached to the vehicle, to the windshield, as properly. So, just throw some of that stuff out there. But other than that, I don't have much on the police report. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be glad to answer them if I can.
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
I get a ton of concern about golf carts.
Yes.
And it's a daily. So, the only possible way we can get a handle on it is in Florida.
Yes, sir.
And I would encourage you, at least, and the officers, to put a little more effort into that because I don't want anybody getting killed out there, and there's definitely a problem with it. And I like to see them. I think everybody should be able to have one, so I don't want to... I know there's probably no way we could ever regulate them, but we need to keep people safe.
Right. And I agree 100%. And we are definitely making it a priority this year, not that it hasn't been in the past, but we are definitely... We're getting the same complaints to the department. We're hearing the community's concern, so we're going to spend a lot of time this year trying to educate. And we ask the public, spread the word with your neighbors, your friends, your family. You know, they're a motor vehicle. They have tags on them. If you wouldn't let your 12-year-old drive your Cadillac down the road, don't send them out there on a golf cart and follow the same motor vehicle laws that you would in your vehicle. So... But we are, and we appreciate that information.
Just want to keep people safe.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions from commissioners? If not, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
For what all you and your staff does. We'll move into the next item, number nine, discussion of possible selection of members of the parking committee. Madam Clerk?
At the last meeting, the board asked to put two members on the parking committee, so a bunch of people have submitted their applications. If you want to vote by ballot, I put ballots in your place, otherwise you could vote out loud, but you guys talk about selecting two people. So, however you like to make it.
What's your pleasure?
The ballot.
The ballot. All right. If you commissioners will please fill out your ballot, and Madam Clerk collect and use the computer to tell...
And see if you have a ballot.
Calculate and see how many votes are... You think you have time tonight to calculate those?
I think everybody ended the meeting.
All righty. Number 10, next item to discuss here.
Coordinates 21-10. A lot of paperwork.
A lot of it. My mama told me if you stay busy, stay out of trouble. Thanks to the board, I've not gotten any trouble this year. 160D, state legislators decided that they wanted to make a more uniformed situation for developers and other folks across the state, so they came up with 160D. The new chapter 160D of the North Carolina statutes consolidates current city and county and county statutes for development regulations. Those are now located in Chapters 153A and 160A, and they consolidate them into a single unified chapter. Chapter 160D replaces these statutes into a more logical, coherent organization, and while the new law does not make major policy changes or shifts in the scope of the authority granted by local government, it does provide many clarifying amendments and consistent reforms that will need to be incorporated in the local development regulations. Now, the board, I brought this to the board's attention last fall, the board voted to allow staff to make all of those statutory required changes in the ordinances. There was quite a few. We spent one to two days a week, parts of those days, working over a three- or four-month period. We finalized those changes that were required under 160D. We sent them off to the attorney, who then helped us get them all fixed up for y'all, and then, once she sent them back to us, we presented those to the planning board, who on the next page, if you will notice, voted 5O to consider it consistent with our current plans. And so, I think you're here to set a public hearing. This will go into effect regardless of whether we make our changes or not, but I would encourage you to thus try to get our changes made under the timeframe that was presented so that folks won't be confused about what we're supposed to be using. So, that's where we're at. You need to set a public hearing so that y'all can take action at the next meeting.
Do you commissioners want to go ahead and do that? And I would suggest that...
I just have one comment. I know we passed the new trash ordinance last week. On page 43 of this proposed resolution or ordinance, it still has the old language. I understand why.
Where's... Is the trash ordinance located in what section? Well, the only ones that we should be worried about are in 157 or in the 150 section. This only affected land usage ordinances only, and so whenever y'all approve this, I'm assuming that whenever we send it off like we always do to get it codified, then that section will show up in the ordinance book. That's the way that... We... All the other ordinances that we did that were under land usage, I went ahead and brought them over and put them in. They were not... We haven't had those put in yet either, but I went ahead and put all of the land usage stuff in here so that it could be brought up to date. So, when we did send it off to be codified and sent back, it would already be in there.
Okay. So, I would suggest that if we're going to send those sections off to be codified, we might as well bring this particular section up to date as well.
It will be.
Did I miss something?
Well, there's even other sections. Because there's still terminology in here about the executive secretary, which we changed, and there's some other things in here, but I understand what you're working on.
This is not an update of the ordinance.
I know.
This is to bring the land usage section in line with the statute. That's what we were asked to do.
I have one question in 157, and on page 227, only because there are two references to non-conforming lot with different statements and ordinances in between. So, on page 227, you've got non-conforming lot, point five, and point seven. And so, are those just supposed to be... They're definitions, so for a non-conforming situation, so are those supposed to be simple points?
On page 227?
Page 227. Down at the bottom, you've got Item 5, non-conforming lot with a statement, and then Item 7, non-conforming lot with a statement.
Well, I didn't... We didn't change those. Those were always in there.
Okay, well...
Yeah, those are not...
Is non-conforming lot, the second one, supposed to be non-conforming structure?
Well, one of them's a non-conforming use, which is second, and then five is a non-conforming lot.
Okay.
And then seven is a non-conforming lot, and it talks about any structure development undertaking that is incomplete. or taking that is incomplete. So one's talking about a lot that's existing at the effective date of this chapter, or non-conforming lots, I'm assuming with a structure on it.
Okay. Everything else is half the fast lane, so it's just something about.
I'd suggest for consideration at the June 15 meeting, at the beginning of the meeting, if I could get it done. If that'd be agreeable, somebody make a motion.
Make a motion if we say for a special reading prior to the regularly scheduled reading.
Your second.
Public hearing, aye. Public hearing.
All in favor, say aye. Madam Clerk, is that clear?
You still want to do 5:00, right?
Yeah, we'll just take the public hearing and get right into our regular meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have the computerized results from our appointment to the parking committee. We have a tie of three people. Do you want to go with three, or do you want to have a runoff of these three?
Quite honestly, so that there's an odd number of people. In case there's ever a, does the majority want something? I actually thought it would be better to have three, so that there's five members. But that was just something I was thinking today.
My pleasure, the board.
I'll let the two members on the parking committee decide.
Ms. Brown, me. More to me. Okay, if that's the case, Paige Dyer. Rick, I apologize to you, but your last name pronunciation is? P-A-A-R-F-U-S?
Not in the building.
He and Elvis are out back. They, I'm sorry. Rick, and then Dana Hamid Smith. The three winners of the highly-salaried position of parking committee. All right, thanks for your service. You're about to render. Number 10. That's not right.
Number 11.
Number 11, we did number 10. Then we went back and then we took 11. All right, discussion of possible selection of engineering firm for engineering design and construction management services for the vacuum system station number two upgrade. Public works, Mr. Clemmons, you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Page 33 in your packet there, those memos in reference to engineering services for lift station two improvements. The town solicited statements of qualifications for the planning, design, permitting, bidding, and construction services related to the improvements of lift station two. Statements of qualifications were due on May 17th. We received one from Green Engineering. According to Article 3D, Section 143-64.31 of North Carolina general statutes, firms that be selected based on being qualified to provide services on the basis of demonstrated competence and qualifications for the type of professional services needed. I know you're probably aware that Green Engineering actually was the engineering firm on our past two lift station upgrades, and staff recommends that we go with them again. I can't think of any reason why. I've been satisfied with the work, and in all reality, I don't know how you could beat the qualifications of somebody that's already done two. That's pretty hard to step up, so you can come up with anything better than that, and you couldn't beat those qualifications. Just my opinion. Got any questions? I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
Commissioners have questions? Mr. Clemmons.
They didn't set a price for it, did they?
No, this is, like I said, this right here is just based off of qualifications and has nothing to do with the price tag whatsoever. After you approve them, then we'd actually have to go in negotiations on the contract.
I was just, if they've done two, maybe they can ease up on the third.
But you've been satisfied with the work? Well, we've done those two, Brian. And in all reality, until those were done, that's been the first time that's really been carried out, because you know, when I said vacuum sewer, kind of new to this area, and we managed to keep it running while they were doing construction. I don't have any complaints. And I'd also like to point out, too, page 62 of your packet there, he's actually got his schedule laid out there, and that is a tight schedule as you can really get. I mean, if we could get things in place and make that happen, that would be great, because if you look at the schedule, his actual groundbreaking there would probably be by October, and basically be wrapped up around May before Easter next year, and that'd be providing everything go well. I mean, I said that's a tight, tight schedule, but in my world, that is good time for construction to be going on. The last time we done one, I feel like we really dodged a bullet, because you know, we had all that severe flood, and we had no storms, and had to top them once sold out, and that was kind of eerie feeling. But we made it.
Commissioners, you got any motions, questions, discussions?
I move that we approve Green Engineering for our engineer in charge of the construction of lift station two.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion, commissioners? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Unanimously passed, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, Mr. Clemmons.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Number 11A, Mr. Hewitt Camma.
It's Ms. Ferguson.
Oh, Ms. Ferguson, how did I miss?
Yes, sir. This was added after the agenda went out. The Division of Coastal Management recently added a native beach and large sediment sampling criteria to its beach nourishment rules and regulations. That means that they are writing it into every permit now, that the communities have to do this as before they do their project. We got in line early when they said that, since they were putting this stipulation in that communities could seek grant funding through them. We got an estimate from our engineer that the cost for that would be $6,000 and applied for a grant through them. It is no match for the town, so this grant is in the amount of $6,000. And we need to recognize that with a budget amendment, the contract and the budget amendment were a part of the packet that went out. Suggested motion is approval of budget amendment number 21-12, and ordinance amending ordinance 20-10, the revenues and appropriations ordinance for fiscal year 2021, amendment number 13.
Motion to approve budget amendment 2112.
Need a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, please. Any discussion from any commissioner? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Unanimously passed. Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you.
Mr. Hewitt, discussion approved. Back to you again. I just can't get away from you.
So we got approval for our project worksheet for Izaiasis, and the attached budget amendment at attachment one, in the amount of $3,838,038, recognizes that FEMA grant funds for category G. The storm caused a loss of approximately 67,438 cubic yards of sand, 320,000 dune plants, and 24,000 feet of sand fence. The funds will be housed in Fund 70, the special project fund for FEMA that was set up last month. Suggested motion is approval of budget amendment 2111, and ordinance amending ordinance 2010, the revenues and appropriations ordinance for fiscal year 2021, amendment number 12.
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Who made that? All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say. No, go ahead.
I'm good. I'm ready.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Unanimously passed. Ms. Ferguson, do you have anything else you'd like to go ahead?
Yes, sir, I'd like one more. Can I have another round?
All right.
Okay, we're really getting ramped up for our beach nourishment FEMA projects. This resolution's for application to the LGC. The attached resolution, attachment one, prepared by our bond attorney firm, Parker, Poe, Adams, and Bernstein LLP, is necessary to direct application to the local government commission for approval of a special obligation bond and requesting LGC approval of the town's special obligation bond and certain related matters. The FEMA reimbursement grant for storm damage repair for four storms, that is Florence, Michael, Dorian, and Izaiasis now is administered to the town on a reimbursement basis. We will have to secure bridge loan financing, and this is a part of the process that's necessary in order to do that. It necessitates LGC approval. Suggested motion is approval of a resolution 2109 directing application to the local government commission for approval of a special obligation bond, requesting local government commission approval of a special obligation bond and certain related matters. Your resolution is attached.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution 2109.
I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Brown, second. Discussion, please. Mike, you look like you're thinking my heart. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say no. Unanimously passed, Madam Clerk.
I'll take a break now.
You're going to rest? Okay. We're going to turn the page on the agenda. Now, Mr. Hood, is it you? What used to be number 13 is now?
You just, you just did 12 or 13.
We got through all that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we turned everything over to Ms. Christie. All right. 14.
I just want to remind everybody, that's me, so remind everybody that last year, after the hurricane and the flooding on canals and a few streets, that there was reimbursed debris pickup, and we had discussion about picking up debris in the West End, even though it's gated community, and the board decided that yes, in fairness, they would do it. However, it could not be FEMA reimbursed according to the FEMA rules at the time. And we said at that time that we would sort of explore how you might get FEMA reimbursement in the upcoming months, so that before the next hurricane season, we had an idea whether it was possible to get approval to have FEMA reimbursement of debris in our gated communities. So a few weeks ago, I suddenly realized that we've been doing other things, and hurricane season's upon us. And the town manager and Christie did contact the appropriate people to find out what instructions they had about getting debris pickup in gated communities. And they basically sent us the same sort of information that we had found last year, which I would just say doesn't give a whole lot of guidance on what's been successful. However, what it does do is it does lay out that if you are going to try to petition for FEMA reimbursement, you do have to have certain agreements already signed with the gated communities. And then you're supposed to be able to provide information of why it would be in the public health interest of the community, the whole community, or the economic interests for the debris to be picked up. Now, all I'm recommending at this point, and I have, I've given my opinion to the town manager of two things we could claim in terms of public health and safety for getting debris out of the gated communities and the economic impact. But at the very least, I would like to propose that the agreements that FEMA says would have to exist if you want to petition after a storm for gated community debris pickup reimbursement, that at least those agreements could be entered into with our gated communities. So if the time comes that we want to petition, we at least have that already.
Does that not have to be pre-approved by FEMA?
What, the agreements? Not to my knowledge. I don't believe so. FEMA accepts a written statement from an authorized applicant official that certifies the applicant has legal authority to remove sites applicable, indemnifies the United States for any claim, and that's fine. But in the information, there were, I think, two things that they said you needed to have between the communities, that were basically giving the town, the communities permission, and that the community would hold whoever is doing the pickup, would not hold them liable for anything. So I'm simply saying that the town, in my mind, could explore getting those agreements in place with the gated communities, so that if we do reach a point where we are going to try to get FEMA to approve reimbursement, that we already have those in place, because those have to be in place before the debris would be picked up.
But doesn't that, not the pre, unis a preapproval, but with FEMA funds, don't somebody that, with the city have to pay upfront and then FEMA reimburse?
FEMA actually does give guidance, and David or Christie, you can correct me if I'm remembering this wrong. FEMA gives guidance that sort of when in doubt, you should ask them before you pick it up. But you, and communities have picked up debris in gated communities before and then been turned down for reimbursement?
That's what I'm saying.
But I'm, all I'm saying at this point is, if we would have a disaster so bad that it seems that you need to get the debris out of the gated communities in order to get to pumping stations, or the vacuum pumps, or some semblance of infrastructure or something, you need to have those agreements as part of the package ahead of time. So it just makes sense to me to have the legal things already in hand. And then if you have a major disaster and we're going to file for something, getting justifications, you've got the legal already handled with the communities.
Would that not be an obligation of the gated community?
It has to be an agreement between the town and the gated community. The town is the one who would apply for FEMA reimbursement as the municipality. So I mean, I'm simply saying, I believe it behooves the town to have the agreements in place with our two gated communities, irrespective of what time of year. It's ready in case we have to, in case we're going to try to. After the storm, I don't think, I don't think there's, after a storm, nobody is going to have the time to sit down and say, we better get these agreements in place so that we can file.
That's correct. And then again, the gated communities and the general public can do it.
Just to be clear, this is just to get the documentation.
Absolutely.
Wait, wait, let me finish. But it doesn't authorize that the town will, in fact, remove the debris in gated, just that the town decides to do it?
No, it does not.
I have one question for the town manager. In here, it says that in order to be part of this program, the town has to agree to indemnify the federal government. Will our insurance carrier indemnify the federal government if we assume this responsibility?
I don't know.
I think we have to know that.
Chair's looking for a motion or permission to move on.
I move that the town explore getting the appropriate legal contracts in place with the gated communities contingent on the town manager finding whether or not there is an issue with indemnification.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so everybody's gonna agree unanimous. Ready to go, number 15? Mr. Hewitt, are you taking charge of that one?
We just had to set a public hearing prior to adopting the budget, and that, according to the schedule that we had been working with, it's recommended that the public hearing be held June the 4th at 5:00 p.m.
I think we skipped one. Did you jump to six?
Oh, did I?
Yeah. Come back complaints.
Complaint's not mine.
No, complaint was mine.
Complaint's yours.
Complaint's is mine.
I was looking for a name on here.
That's okay. I've had, over the past couple of months, I've had a number of people stopping me and asking me, how do I report such and such, how do I complain about such and such? And a lot of times, it's been well in the past, I've taken a picture of this situation, I've sent a picture in, and, you know, raised the question of, is this a violation, can it be taken care of, or is this a problem? But that actually, I've found out, is not the way we operate. There is a formal method that you follow to make a complaint on an ordinance that would have an enforcement action. So, I would simply like to clarify that if a citizen is complaining about something that has to do with overflowing trash, that's one of them, inadequate trash bins, yard waste, those are all under solid waste. What evidence is necessary? Does there need to be a picture? Does there need to be a picture of the house number? Where do people find the form? And parking regulations is the same thing. How do you report illegally parked cars or golf carts, particularly at beach accesses and things? The nuisances has to do, again, with when there's overly loud music, or there's something illegal going on in terms of the time that there's lights on and everything. What information is needed? And again, is this by form? General beach regulations, how do people report dogs on the beach off hours, or people disturbing turtles? What's the process? Street right of ways, I think, and the visibility at intersections? It's interesting to me that we did get a citizen who just sent us a comment that there is an intersection that he came to, said he almost hit a pedestrian because there was a corner lot that had too high of vegetation, and he quoted actually the ordinance and reported it, but is this adequate for a formal request for something to be done? So that's why I put it in here. I'd like our public to understand better what they have to do when they see a violation of an ordinance that's a health and safety issue, or a parking issue. What evidence do they have to provide? And what's the timeframe that they can expect it to be examined? And I know that some things are higher priority than others, but I think our citizens need to understand the process to follow, so that there just aren't emails that come in that it's not an appropriate way of making the complaint. So I don't know who on staff can answer, you know, what we can tell our citizens of what the process is and what the, I'd just say, level of evidence is that should be sent, but I think it's a good time to remind people.
Mr. Hewitt, you wanna take a stab at that? Ms. Ferguson, would you like to stab at it? I mean, I think that she's got some valid points. I mean, you know, we need...
Since becoming the commissioner, I have received several emails, and with my email address and telephone number in the public record now, I've received quite a few telephone calls, and they seem to ask the same question as, how can we do this? And most of the time, my answer is, I know who the city staff that needs to be contacted, and I'll contact them. I've contacted one of Jeremias officers, and they took care of some parking issues, and there's been some other things, but, you know, like the visibility at the intersections. I received the same emails that I guess the rest of us did, and actually had the opportunity drive by, and that is, it is an issue there. So, again, what would be the correct avenue for residents to take? Whether it was an email sufficient, and you distribute it that way, or because most of the time, it's gonna go in the business.
Well, in the past, if my memory serves me correct, we were operating on somebody had a complaint or something, they were coming to the town hall, and they were filling out a written complaint, and you know, if it's at the intersection or something like that, that's in the street departments, and I'm gonna drive out there into the corner lots, grew up so bad that I can't see the road, and our bush hole works, I'm gonna fix it where they can see. That's the way I've operated in the past, and I have got a few emails occasionally from people, you know, so, that's my take.
Is there an official form?
Yeah.
And that's the form we need to use. That's what we're doing.
Can we simply send out a blast to people, reminding them that there is a form online to use when they have a complaint? And I would assume that they can fill it out and email it in, that they don't actually have to come in and physically be at town hall to fill it out?
Well, I get emails all the time, you know, if I get an email, you know, whether it's here at the town hall or not, maybe that's record of complaint, something, I go back on it, and clarifies, no paper, I'm doing back to court, because I didn't say I had it, and then it was registered in the form.
So you act on an email as well as on a written complaint?
Yeah.
Okay.
If I go to my office in the morning, that's my... But that's the department head's discretion to do that.
And so, why do we require a written, what do we gain from a written report that we don't get from an email?
I'm gonna direct that answer to Mr. Evans, but it's different with a complaint on a dog off the leash versus the complaint on a zoning violation.
None of these were zoning violations that I listed. These were all, I mean, if you wanna say street right of way visibility at an intersection has to do with zoning, yes, but most of these are health and safety.
Complaint that came in yesterday, I had two complaints over the weekend. Complaint number one was about a missing accessway. Said a fence was built between the accessway and their ability to get to the beach. I worried about it all night long. I went down there, looked, and if I could show you a picture, it's 10 feet wide, there's nothing in the way. Okay? We acted on that complaint. We consider all complaints to be acted upon. Now, some of the complaints that we get, whether we act on them or not, we do request that people fill out a complaint form because of the type that they are. The one with the intersection today, I've been down there today, and I've already taken a picture of it. I took it this morning before 8:30. If it comes in, my department acts on it. If you've called in and said there's trash, do people have two trashcans? The best we can do is go down there and see if there's trash outside the trashcans. We don't have probable cause to then take action because they have four bedrooms, or five bedrooms and two trashcans, because we don't have any evidence that proves, or any rule that says they have to present all their trashcans. Their trashcans could be behind the house. That is not evidence that gives us the right to go on the property and trespass. We act on all complaints. We use the rules that are in place that govern us under what we can and cannot do at residence houses on those complaints. Now, certain times, sometimes, we will act on a complaint, and if the complainant doesn't like the actions that we've taken, then we require them to come fill out a request form. That's for them and for us. Because they're not satisfied with our results, then we usually end up having to take more action and then clarify even more. But we act on every single complaint. Now, all complaints require action. If the complaint is 100% just not a valid complaint, or not an ordinance violation, we don't act. But we consider all complaints something that needs to be acted on. But I do use my discretion on how we handle those. Only a fraction of our complaints are required to fill out a request form on the ones that we act and send letters to. And by the way, we're out there every day. When we see stuff, we send letters of those too. We just don't have a complaint-driven system of zoning enforcement. We do what we can. When we're out there, if we see a violation, we take action on those too.
So, your response was just two different things. I think we all understand that investigating the complaint doesn't necessarily mean that there's gonna be some type of enforcement. That's good. But to me, from listening to the heads that get most of their complaints, and the police get a complaint, they go, they don't need a written complaint to get that, somebody calls up. We are servicing the community without the need for them to come in and fill out a written report, but there's an occasion where you'll request a written report because you deem that to be more necessary. But even without the written report, all of the complaints are investigated to some degree, and the proper action is taken after the investigation.
I think that's an accurate statement. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we can tell somebody when they ask us about this part, and say, just send an email, and they'll take care of it?
That's not, Sadie, we won't miss some, but I think that's a fair statement you just made.
Appropriate action based on an email.
Well, I'll give you an example of where a request would be requested. If you're telling us that someone built a fence on your property, you need to come in and fill out a request form, so that we can go out there on the property to see whether they've done that.
It's sort of like, not really an administrative, but it gives us enough, it gives us enough information to justify being able to go on the property.
I get you, but the email will start the ball rolling. It's not that they have to come in here and make a formal complaint to get you to tell them that...
In that particular situation, if they send an email, we tell them to come in and...
You reply to the email with that.
And so, is it, for people who will say, well, I don't know who I send this to, is it best to simply say, send it to the town clerk?
Absolutely.
And she will make sure it gets to the appropriate department?
Well, most of our complaints come through Heather.
There are some citizens who actually know who different department heads are, but most don't.
Yeah, the clerk services the clearinghouse for a lot of things.
All right. Are we done with this?
Yeah.
All right. Number 16, scheduled date for public hearing.
Yes, sir. Budget, public hearing, proposed budget fiscal year 2021, June 4th, 5 o'clock, is what we would recommend that the board do.
All right. Town manager's report?
Very brief and verbal tonight. Just wanted to let the board know as related to our application for the special obligation bond financing with the local government commission. We've got our CAMA permit in hand, along with our Department of Water Resources. The solicitation for dredgers is on the street. There will be a pre-bid conference next Thursday, and I mentioned the CAMA permit in hand. There's a new requirement in there, well, there's several new requirements, but one requirement that has emerged is there's now an increased turbidity monitoring requirement. So these permits are layers and upon layers. I think that the last time that I looked, that the permit conditions, if it wasn't 27 pages, it was 57 pages on special requirements that we have to adhere to. But we're making progress, and y'all can expect our timetable, some actions by the board start falling into place here over the next couple of months, with our anticipated construction date either being this winter or next winter, depending on how the bids come in. That's all I have.
Any questions, Mr. Hewitt? Mayor's comments, two things very briefly. Congressman McIntyre's mother just passed away, and I think it'd be appropriate to ask our clerk to send a card or something from the commissioners, permission to acknowledge that. Is that all right with everybody? Second thing, Ms. Ferguson, I've had some calls already about the concerts. Would you speak to the concerts, what the plan is, so everybody can get the dust off their dancing shoes?
Yes, sir. With the governor's update with his executive order, concerts will start as scheduled next Sunday on the 30th, and it'll be Gary Louder and Smoking Hot for the first concert. Back to business as normal.
Very good. Expect to see every one of you there. Mr. Brown?
I have one question for Dave. Was there not, like, from the previous board, like some kind of regulation put in there, like on these, our street setbacks? Okay? I've been down a lot of canal streets, and we got people, they're stringing off the whole side of the road.
Yes, sir, there was.
Okay? Now, I remember for years and years, you know, and this is just the simple necessity, person buys a lot, they know where their property line starts. And I think we need to do something, because I looked at these streets here, and I'm seeing six by sixes put out beside the asphalt. You know what I'm saying? It's like they barricading the side of the road. And I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna have it put on next to the board's meeting, that we're gonna vote and get, do away with this, because I think it's gotten out of hand. You know, people know when they buy their property where the property line starts. We need to keep that right of way open for the police, for the maintenance department and everything else. I mean, that's why it's there. And I just think that we need to do something to remedy this. I can understand a person won't take care of the property, but they can do it without putting a damn line of sixes up there. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I just can't see that. That, to me, is very detrimental to the item. Okay? And I know this is just one opinion, but we're gonna put it, I want everybody, you know, we're gonna put it on the next agenda. Let's see if we can't do something to kind of help this situation. I drove up yesterday, I mean, today, I went down Marvin Street, and looked, I go back out the house about to turn, looked deep, because it's so tight, couldn't even get out. Couldn't get back out on the road, that's from the six by... Couldn't get back out on the road, that's when the six, the sixes came. You know what I'm saying? And, and it's just ridiculous. Here's the road. Don't bother, this is, it's not you, it's a camera. You know what I'm saying? And I'd like to see us addressed there.
Okay.
Okay? And, and, you know, that, that's one of my main concerns, and, and I'll get to that.
But again, I'm going to go back to the, my same subject with the golf carts, and again, that's something that I'm, as Brian is concerned about the safety of the people operating, and the safety of the carts themselves. I don't propose that the town of Holton Beach be responsible for inspections. However, I think that there needs to be a fee charged to the people that bring them over here on our island, and a document that says they have safety-approved that vehicle for operation on Holton Beach. In other words, charge them and give them the liability for having that equipment on our island. You know, it might be state-approved and all that, that's great, but to operate it on our island, they need to have a something similar to a Holton Beach permit on the golf carts, and a, with that permit comes, when it's issued to them for that cart, that that cart meets all the safety requirements required by the state of the country.
I have a question. When you say charge, you talking about monetary or...
Monetary, monetary charge. And that doesn't mean weekly. And I, you know, it's like, then again, you're putting the monkey back on our police department. Is that, you know, permit invalid or not? It would be a yearly, you know, like one year it'd be purple, and one year it'd be green, and...
Madam Attorney, can the town do that?
Yes, it sounds really problematic. I know you're just talking in generalities right now and out of it, but I'm never interested in things enforcement and what we need to, I mean, I just see a lot of things like that, but we can discuss that, and we have kind of a better idea of what you're, we're actually trying to do with that, everything. Just set the terms of fees or be out or whatever.
Well, it's, it's twofold, really. Fees are one thing, and that is to help, as Brian suggested earlier this evening, the fees to help our, you know, our, the police department is using their time chasing these golf cart issues. And it would, again, if, if they're not, it would, instead of, the safety inspections are done, you know, they have to have them inspected, like a car, you know. But then again, the, the people that bring them over on those trailers say that that golf cart that they just brought over, nothing was changed, and it still meets those specifications. Make them responsible for that. That's, that's, that's what I'm saying. It's like a permit. You know, you ought to have a permit to have it operated over here, and, and once, once a year, that car's good all year long, and it specifies that the, the people that bring it over, the carts meet the proper specifications every time. Somebody runs it off in the ditch, and tears the, you know, the thing up, and they patch it back together and send it back over here, and it's a dangerous vehicle. That's what I'm, I'm saying. I'm just, I've, I've had issues with the golf carts personally, and they're terribly dangerous to operate on the, on the streets.
Ryan?
I'd like to thank one person, and that's Mr. Cooper, and I know he's listening. Opening this place back up. I want to thank you people for coming out, and we've got some empty seats in here, and I'd like to fill them up. So it's good to see people back in here. Appreciate the staff's hard work as usual, and that's about all I've got. But I'm, I'm happy to see people back, back, back open and back in here.
I have to echo what, what Brian said. It's been, it's been over a year since we had some real input into, in the meetings and comments, and I think we, we all benefit from having that type of dialogue and input. So I'm glad to see everybody, and again, there's a lot of, there's a lot more room here, we could use everybody. And the other thing I'd say is that, last time we did the developmental fees, we had a, a problem because there was very little, actually, there was no comment until they were voted in place. I would say that if you have a concern, if you have an idea, if you have an objection, don't wait until we vote on it. Bring it to our attention and give me the benefit of your concerns and objections before I vote.
All right, Ms. Pell?
Like everybody else, I'm glad to see people here. Memorial Day is coming up on us, and let's all have a really happy, healthy, and prosperous season.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, I turn my attention back to the agenda. I think I know what happened, but I just realized that, if my memory serves me correctly, we normally would have an opportunity for the public to speak.
I, I loaded it at the front on this one, I did general and the agenda comments, but since next time we'll have everybody...
We'll go back to the original way, right? Okay. And the reason we got caught in this was the governor's thing. Okay. All righty.
We could allow somebody...
The board can always amend the agenda at any time.
At this time, with the board's permission, we would entertain anyone in the audience that wants to speak to any item on the agenda or off the agenda, realizing you have a maximum time, three minutes. If you'd like to be recognized and come to the podium on my right, speaking to the microphone, give you your name and what your concern is. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to do that? All right. Well, thank you very much. And number 20 on the agenda is, Madam Clerk, we're going to consider going into executive session?
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Executive session pursuant to North Carolina general statute 1433181185 to instruct a staffer or agent concerning negotiation of the price in terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property, and North Carolina general statute 1433181183 to consult with the attorney.
Is your motion going to executive session?
Motion. I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye. We are back into regular session, and I understand someone wants to make a motion now.
Motion to recess and reconvene Thursday at 10:30 a.m.
In a second. In a second. Discussion, hearing now, all in favor, say aye. All right, Matt, no. We've got to have a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
No, you're good, you're recessed. You're good.
Yeah, we're recessed.
You're recessed.
Yeah, not adjourned.
Okay, we haven't voted, they have.
And I missed the second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did. Jerry?
Me?
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.